What's that?
That's why I guess we're not allowed.
Oh, we have two now. Yeah, that Brindley is there. She's gotta be like closing in at forty pounds now.
Ooh.
Yeah, thirty-five, forty pounds. She's getting digged fast. And then, but Poppy was not the holiday. She's a three-year-old that we got. Uh, you can't, we had two before in the past. They're good. They're good. They're still learning a few things. Sometimes a little.
Like the beds.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have.
News.
Um, yeah, we can do a GPS one because you can do it up remotely.
Yeah.
And you can kind of keep them within your, you know, this area. So we're looking at that as a, as an alternative. That's all said? Perfect.
Actually, we do that.
That's it? Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, uh, we'll call the public meetings of order at seven oh three PM. First up on the agenda, Keith, you grew up from the Nurture Nature Children's Center.
Yeah, um, so my name's Keith Harmon, live at two ten, this castle road. Uh, I'm on board with the Nurture Nature Town here center. Um, so with the approval of the director, the president, and vice president, um, I bet it's amazing. And so I called the office this morning and Keisha said Sue's on vacation, but maybe you could, you know, let the selectmen know directly. But essentially, we've been at capacity for a long time. Obviously, COVID has been terrible, so we love the space there. We've been there since, I'd say nineteen ninety-one. Um, so it's like mid forties to high forties in kids, twelve, fifteen teachers. And essentially, demand is off the charts. We've got like two-year waiting lists to get everyone in. And so, you know, obviously, we're all parents and all that. So, you know, it seems like the time. So for about a year, uh, we've been talking about potentially trying to move into a larger space. Right now, we're in Hutchinson, um, development.
Yes.
And so we sort of casually looked around in the private real estate market. Um, it's hard to find bits there. But, um, growing up like that with the, he worked in town government in Drake in Massachusetts. And I remember that at one point, Drake helped a specific childcare center, like with a lease and public land and whatnot. Um, so that's not, actually, I'm not here to ask you to give us land or anything like that. But, um, we are in the market for land. Uh, we think, you know, obviously, everyone, I think a lot of people. We feel it's really treasured for sort of the family atmosphere that it has. So, uh, we'd like to be able to serve more families. Uh, we're outgrowing, outgrowing the space we're in. And so the short version is, um, if the town has any property or building or land that fit into kind of the mission, which is, um, you know, really nature-based, um, and obviously is like compliant with like our licensing regulations. Um, we just like to figure out the process by which we would, you know, stay informed and see what's, see what's possible. Um, and I don't know if it's a natural fit. We've got obviously a lot of new families and the whole surrounding area. Um, so I guess that's, that's not really sure.
My biggest question is whether it's residential, agricultural, or residential or both that allow daycare centers. I don't have my use schedule in front of me.
Do you know so, Mr. Planting? I know, I can bend that longer than I am. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I mean, we can always look.
I, I'd have to say probably no for residential. Well, no, probably yes, because there was a new fields preschool out on.
Yeah, well, also, we are, so we're a nature center, so we have an agricultural component to what we do anyway. So I, our brief research, um, and this is from the director, Jennifer Blackman. Um, it, I believe like agricultural was fine because of, uh, because of the nature theme of the school. And agricultural, like all agricultural stuff. But also, like, you know, we could be in a commercial zone. That would be tough, um, just because of prices. And, uh, that having, like, say, a kind of large station to get to one up. Um, and so, yeah, I guess, I feel like it's, it's open to agricultural. Don't think it's open to residential. I think there's some kind of blended zoning that it would also be open to.
Well, the zoning you're in right now is, is down Hutchinson is, is industrial, but I think they made a variance for. For that, your facility there now.
Also, we wouldn't presume to like do anything without getting permission.
Of course. Oh, no, no, we, we understand that.
I, I would just like you to at, at least not spin your wheels and look at property in a zone that would be problematic.
Right.
Uh, I just don't have the use schedule in front of me, but, I mean, there is daycare and childcare. And don't, don't let agricultural make you think it's, it's a farm name.
Right.
Not necessarily, nor with residential. However, with commercial, yeah, what you see on one oh eight is what you get.
Right.
So you probably don't want that.
The unfortunate thing is, the town itself, we don't own a whole other property.
Yeah.
Um, that being said, I mean, there are things going on here in town that may create an opportunity. I'm thinking about Derrick's, right? And where, what the role the town's gonna play and how that's going to be adapted. Um, so there may be opportunities. What's your timing in all of this?
I mean, it's a long-term goal.
Okay.
We can stay where we are as long as we need to. Um, you know, we, uh, we've taken, so we're not profit. And, uh, we've taken the approach that the teachers have really stepped up and really hired retention. So they've received much raises, which they deserve. Uh, we also elected to not raise prices because things were tough all over. Um, we were, like, we qualified, but we were lucky to get EBD loans. So, um, you know, we have some financial ability to do it. Uh, we're not gonna rush to say, you know, besides the fact that we have a really long waitlist and whatnot. And but we could be, part of the reason also is, um, you know, I figure even if it's not town land or specifically that, you know, it's also a small community. So we've got to make it aware to the selectmen and people in town hall and, you know, like maybe where to get around. But, um, yeah, if you're willing to, you know, build up early land or buildings are already and it's safe and compliant and all that stuff. You know, we're flexible. So we're just looking at how, because every day, it's basically people come to see Jen all the time. It's, you know, two-year wage, it's in the area, and other places that are really expensive and all those like.
Again, it may be fortuitous, it may, it may not be a fit, but this is out of this Castic. Um, you know, Derek Rugg has come before the planning board to talk about, they have a hundred and twenty acres there. I think twenty of it is in Exeter, so we're talking about a hundred acres. They haven't come before the board, the planning board, with any kind of formal proposal, but they're looking at, what does the town want to do? Do we want to put some into conservation? How that might work between, you know, Derek and the town and the land trust? So there may be an opportunity through that venue. But certainly, um, you know, there are things I'm sure that we can all take a look at and maybe come up with something creatively for what you're talking about.
And the other thing is, you know, of course, like, as part of it, like, we'd be glad, you know, awful discounts on town residents, all that stuff. You know, we really wanna, we're in an adult, adult community, we're all kids, so.
And we can be fairly creative, I'm sure.
Yeah, we can be fairly flexible. So it's kind of an idle thought. Um, and I called and talked to Sue this morning. Keisha was great to, you know, go in here with the selectmen. I was like, I'll, that takes.
So what, or very, if you were to purchase an existing building, what's the square footage that you'd be looking for?
I mean, I want to say right now, what we have is about, I believe about twenty-two hundred square feet. From the way I understand it, it's not necessarily the gross square footage, although we would certainly need more square footage. But there is something to do with the size of the room. There are pretty careful regulations around like square footage per kid, per age group and whatnot. And so it's one of those things, and, you know, you deal with it as well because, you know, like a room that can fit, you know, let's say five kids, right? If they're young kids, you'd need two teachers per four. So that fifth kid, as much as we love to have them, you not have to bring in like a whole teacher for one kid. You know, it's like, you know, the youngest kids, I think it's three hundred dollars a week to be there. So it's not, I, I don't think it's quite, necessarily, you know, it's making speculations on what's expensive or inexpensive. Um, but, you know, it's that sort of boundaries. And so I, I checked with, I want to check with Jen, but I relate certain good proportions where, and it changes by age groups. We would look at whatever space and say, this is what we allow, this is like staffing capacity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so hard question, I'm sorry.
Keith, what's your email?
Keith dot Harmon at gmail dot com. If you wouldn't mind terribly, could I give you the director's email as well?
Absolutely.
I know it starts with director.
Director at Hutchinson dot com.
Yeah, I can hear the song. How do you approach Hutchinson though?
You know, we've been trying to get in touch with them. They're actually a pretty big company. I think they're imported in Germany. So we've asked employees to put us in touch with, with someone. Uh, we've, uh, emailed like the addresses that are available to us on file. At one point, we had some of them respond. Uh, but I guess a couple of things. Um, you know, they own that whole property and they're a big, big company. So we're kind of like a fly on the, on the bad way, but like, you know, no CFO or Hudson, so they're like, oh, we've got a chance to sell the Nurture Nature building, right? Um, and then I guess I just observed that a company like that would probably not be as suitable for like carving out a piece of a contiguous piece of land. And, you know, that's their own economics often just let, you know, like.
Really? They, they're on a big chunk of land.
They are a big chunk of land. And we don't know, like, let me be clear, we don't know. We're trying to get in touch with them. We have a good, I mean, we, we have a good relationship with them, but it's all positive. We just don't hear from them very much.
I live across the street.
Okay.
And, and I know the manager of the facility, and I've actually talked to him in the past. And what he has indicated to me is, they don't want to part with any of the land. They, they don't have plans for it, but to your point, they think long-term of, once they have it, they, they, it has to be really compelling for them to.
Because that house up front did belong to them at one time.
Yeah.
Oh, that corner? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And they sold it?
Yeah, just so, but that was under different management.
Yeah, exactly.
It's also tough, it's a little tough from where we sit to be like, okay, well, are we not hearing back? Because everyone's busy and it's this random email from the answer, right? Or are we not hearing back because it's the polite way and, you know, it's just not.
I think persistence is key.
That's true, that's true.
Just keep bugging them. And it, it, it seems to me that the success of a daycare center that entered to a resident population of employees would want to stay a foot.
That's what I'm saying, you know, like, not that you weren't a first choice, but we figured the same thing. Like, if we expand, we, it, you couldn't put capital into like building a new structure and doing all that stuff if we didn't actually have long-term, obviously, rights to the space.
Right, right.
In a territorial way, which is like a fiscal responsibility way. Um, but yeah, absolutely. Per email, just quickly, director dot nurture nature.
Director, nurture nature, no spaces.
No spaces, one word, yeah. Director dot nurture nature at gmail dot com.
Now, have you or the director talked to Paul McDonald, the, basically the guy who runs that facility? Runs Hutchinson there?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know she says that she's like running to employees and whatnot and said, hey, you know, like, there's a girl there. We can talk to her. We could get this little, get a little credit over here and we'd love to expand. Um, but we need to talk to someone about what that would look like. And she hasn't gotten any feedback back. And to her credit also, like, she's killed herself in that bitch for the last two years. It's been a roll, like, like they've done a great job. But it's, you know, obviously been a really stressful time.
Um, I'm more than happy, Paul McDonald, I'm more than happy to reach out to Paul.
You and mine.
Oh, absolutely. I have a, a good, good relationship with Paul. Uh, I mean Hutchinson has always been a great supporter here in town. They do, they do the dictionaries for those kids every graduation up at N E S. But I, I started talking to Paul when I first moved in across the street. I reached out to him and it, it'd been, he's always been good. I'm more than happy to get kind of his perspective and
Okay.
and certainly follow up with you and, and the director and, and, you know. Can't promise anything, but certainly, we can certainly try to work with you guys to figure something out if we can.
For us, it's really like that. So we've looked at different things and we've looked at different things. And again, it's like the dimensions of it, the expense of it, you know, and like, um, for instance, we wouldn't want to be right on one oh eight. We wouldn't want to be like right on thirty-three, so.
We're tugging.
Yeah, so we're open to all of options. It's just, um, yeah, we feel like we can serve a bigger population and as well or better. And then, you know, not that it's above compensation, but like we really aggressively tried to take care of our teachers and whatnot. But at a certain point, like expanding scale, I mean, we could, you know, do all that stuff.
Well, there's an economy of scale that certainly would help you guys out.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly. It went up for profit, so there's no, you know, there's no profit incentive thing here, all besides that. And I have a long tradition and I'm taking really good care of our kids.
So a nice old farm with acres.
Yeah, yeah. We live in two tents, so, um, we're the, we're the white house and then the green house. Uh, we'll change.
My grandson goes to a nature-type daycare and, and it, yeah, I, I understand your, your difficulties locating it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You gotta have boys.
Hopefully, on the flip side, like, the space that's great for us is actually not all that great for like a commercial place. It needs lots of like drive-by traffic, visibility. We're back to Hutchinson's house, it's almost like that.
Um, I'm not, I don't want to put anybody in a difficult position here. I, I know what you're saying about one away, but at the same time, I'm not sure you'd ever want to do this, but John's moving across the road.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's a big property going down to the river.
Absolutely. We'd be set aside, right?
What's that?
We, we'd be set aside, right? Like, we'd be glad to be set back.
If you're set back now.
Well, it's set back off the road. And again, I have no, John, he probably, probably want to mean to keep the property anyways. This has got a long history, but again, there, there's a lot of things that we can think about here in town.
Not to like lightly appeal to your sympathy, but we'd like to actually appeal to your sympathy. So if anyone knows something.
If anybody has a hand out there, let us know.
We need to help the kids.
There are plenty, there are plenty of beautiful farms I can think of.
I'd say, yes, you can look at the little parcel of land right, um, at the end of eighty-five, as it abouts one oh one. But the truth is, that's right next to the highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you can hear that, yeah.
Yeah, that was the thing. There are studies that say, you know, kids that are under here for us and like high, like, under there. They're performing horse, you know, so, um, yeah, we're open to, you know, we're really flexible. And, you know, we, we had a reasonable, uh, endowment, I would say, that had been maintained. And it's not like it's skyrocketed, but like it's in a position where, you know, we should be able to do something.
Another thought, again, throwing it out, maybe somebody has some ideas about the old Finn property on, and again, this is on eighty-five. But that's a, again, that's a property that goes way bit, that's the horse farm.
I don't think so. I know the guy owns that.
I know, that's why I'm thinking this is changing. Again, I'm throwing out ideas, just throwing out ideas and everything. But anyways, well, we'll certainly look at, at stuff. As I said, there's stuff coming up with, with the property out of this Castic that we can certainly, as we consider it, um, you know, have that entered into.
That would be awesome. And again, we're just trying to get feelings up and all that stuff. And I think at one point, isn't there, isn't there a little building, um, like right next to here? That was for sale from the town?
The post office.
That's the post office.
That's a small post, but that's, if you would put me in mind, maybe there was like.
Water department right now is using that.
We're borrowing from that, right?
What's that?
Yeah, that's excellent.
Yeah.
And that little piece of property would not work for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know that. It's just the, the other reason why I thought, hey, maybe we should use it in the town. Um, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Keith.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Great.
I was just about to just agree, um, program with the girls. I spent time with her. And it's, it's really nice having a place that's on the way home.
Yeah.
Yeah, we moved, uh, we moved ours, um, well, I was moving in like November of twenty nineteen. Um, but we thought we would be in September of twenty nineteen. And so the two girls, Flare and Violet, they started there like, let's say, September sixth. And right away, it was like, you know, the whole community's been incredible, like neighbors, lots of people. But right away, it was just such like a warm welcoming, like everything. So it means lots to me. That's why I wanted to be on board now. Our youngest Finn is there as well. He's, uh, basically a year and a half now, so. Um, and yeah, over time, I've met a lot of people that, that are great up there, and so. Hopefully, we can keep the girls for another three years.
Keith Hutchinson going.
Yeah, yeah. We're not, right?
All right, any other questions, comments? No? I will move on. Um, next up, correspondence. Uh, the Men's Health Month correspondence we have from last meeting. Any, uh, questions, concerns about, uh, the report for Men's Health Month?
No.
No? I'll, I'll make a motion that we sign on to the Men's Health Month correspondence.
Michael, um, I just remember, um, I think we got a lot of this in the town back in, just before COVID, like January twenty. And the select board, uh, this one question, like, why would we, I think, sign on to, uh, I think it was noted that they got the bill, but the board decided that it may not make sense to sign on to a, um, a designation or any, I don't know exactly what the law says, but I just, if the board's gonna sign something out and we decided not to sign on before, I just.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Men's Health Month?
Mm-hmm. There was a, that was a month letter. It's actually the first select board meeting I started coming to. Right after recycling, sort of got this stuff. Actually, it was interesting that we got that letter.
I wasn't here, so.
I, I don't recall.
Just as a help, first I remember being like, that's a little bizarre, you know, um, that, that is something that is being sent out to every individual town. So I did a little research at the time on it. And I was just scared. I still don't, you know, whose songs are in, what, what does it mean when we sign on to do that? I feel like, um, I don't know, I just remember the board previously noted it and said, we received it, so then I didn't do anything on it, so. If there was a difference.
I didn't know that it was.
I don't know that we've ever had a problem with the Men's Health Month. I mean, I know there are issues.
That's a stretch.
Board that we've, we've, we've had issues with. I don't, I don't recall this one though, as being one that was, was an issue in particular. Um, this was a correspondence, I think it was forwarded by, was it forwarded by the police department to us?
No, we didn't have any attention to Chris Hutchins.
Oh, was, it was, it was through Chris Hutchins?
Yes.
So, I, again, I, I looked at it. I didn't have a particular problem. I don't know if you guys did. No?
No, I, I didn't. We, with all the things going on with women's health, I, I found it interesting.
We got that in front?
I'd actually go to this guy, Chris Fainak, I don't know if I qualify.
No, I don't think you're. Um, all right, uh, again, I'll, I'll, motion's on the table to sign on to the Men's Health Correspondence. Any second?
Second.
Second by Betsy, all in favor? Aye.
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 Great. Uh, next up is the mapping contract. Uh, we had this from last time. Um, this is with, um, C A I, Cartographic Associates. Um, they do all the G I S, um, services for us for our digital mapping. Um, this is a contract renewal. I believe it's at the same amount as it was for the last contract at nineteen hundred. Um, any questions about the services throughout the, and the contract?
I don't know.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the, um, Cartographic Associates contract, um, as presented for services through March of twenty twenty-three.
How's that?
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Great, thank you. And then, uh, we have the renewal for the contract with Elm for our recycling collection. Um, when we first passed this contract, it was for through the end of December, uh, thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, with an option to extend for two years, uh, through twenty twenty-three. Um, this is the, basically, uh, requesting the renewal. Um, so, uh, any questions or concerns about this contract? No? Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I, I will move to approve. Betsy, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? I think pretty much everyone's fairly happy with them. Elm certainly is very responsive to questions and concerns. I think the relationship is one fairly well.
And I, um, got an email from Jim today. He's going to be providing those numbers with a cardboard offset.
Oh, great.
Um, in the next few days.
Great.
I think the response has been pretty good. That's totally anecdotal, just from driving around on a Monday. I, I, I know at least Little Baker Street has a whole bunch of stuff.
Well, people certainly haven't used the cardboard.
Oh.
That's just.
Yeah.
They were nice people too. Whatever, I feel like those, like, gave you a conversation support, so.
And Jim's often the one getting the cardboard out front, so it's like, he's right in there in the middle of it, so it's really easy to see too.
I'm pretty sure we don't need to sign a new contract. Uh, what we're doing is expressing that we are renewing the option. So I don't think there's any formal signature required. If so, we'll, we'll get that at the next meeting to some.
Jackie, do you know if that's from now that dollar round, you can share that at the next board meeting?
The dollar round for the offset?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she was gonna get the numbers for it, so we'll, we'll get it out. That's the C A I one? What's this one, Betsy? Is this something I can send them?
No.
Oh, this is a, it's, uh, oh, that's an credit application. Okay, great. We're, we're over there. Um, with the two in?
There's one there and then we have another one just tonight for Mr. Kessler.
Yeah, there's one. And this one's Mike Kessler.
And I have another one from last week, from the last meeting, right?
Um, we approved the one of the last meeting.
Did we get?
Yes, 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 yes. So I think we only have the Mike Kessler one. So, um, Mike Kessler has done an application as a, a veteran's tax credit. Um, any questions, concerns about that?
No.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the Kessler veteran's tax credit presented.
Second.
Uh, second by Jackie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great. All right. Oh, I did what you did last time. I did the signature that you're, if you're not alone, Jackie, you're not alone. Uh, okay, so that's the veterans' credit. Um, appointment for deputy emergency management. That's why you're here. So, um, Jeff Meister is here. Uh, he is, uh, up for the appointment for deputy emergency management.
Well, it's, it's not me.
Don't you give me the wrong one. That's for Wayne.
What's this one? Oh, I'm sorry. This one's for Wayne Young.
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry. So this is for Wayne to become a deputy emergency management. I thought it was yours.
Let me give you a little background.
Yeah, please do.
You know, ten years ago, our, please, please, keep here.
You can say this.
Chris Wilson and Tom. So both Chris Wilson was captain of the rescue squad and, uh, are, were deputy directors. So we actually had two deputy directors and a director. So we just want to kind of get back to that. And the police department, please, please go over to emergency management. Uh, we've just done our last two drills, the Seabrook drills. Uh, we did one in, what do we do?
December.
December, and we just did one last week. And then we've got the greater exercise coming up in, uh, May.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm, are you April, April sixth, I think. So it's just, there's, there's a lot, we're really busy right now. Uh, and it's, we, we want to get back to having two deputy directors. That's all it is.
Yep.
And the nice thing about this, this girls, these girls, we can reimburse that state. So everything we put into these girls, we get, we get reimbursed. Uh, I don't know if any of you guys are interested in coming down to the next, um, the actual greater, greater exercise.
When is it?
Uh, May sixth.
Send us an email.
I'm sorry.
Send us an email. That would be helpful.
Because technically, we're supposed to notify this Michael.
Yep.
Uh, you know, it's nice to have one of you, one of you there. Then you can pay for it. Uh, you don't have to come to the whole, you know, and it's, it's usually in the morning, last about one o'clock. Um, but it's interesting. Uh, we're kind of in a unique situation over here. I think we're better off than a lot of other parts of the state because seventeen towns that surround Seabrook, we, we do this drill every, every year. Uh, so there's lots of interesting stuff, interesting we should learn, uh, by opening. of interesting stuff, interesting you should learn, uh, by opening up your E O C, working with the state E O C. There's lots of training. There's, uh, you said.
Did that for a long time. Like, I.
Yeah. So basically, it's, it's very interesting, you know, probably the, the biggest, you know, hardest position is the rate of officer. So, you know, we've, I've sent Wayne Raymond, Ray Buck, and I sent my son Justin to the rate of, rate of training. And, uh, you know, it's, it's good. But we need some younger people to, to get in because some of the folks that are older, it's, you know, it's, you know.
It gets old.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So anyway, that's, so that's all we, we wanted, we just wanted to formally appoint Wayne as, as deputy director. And then, uh, once, once we appoint him, you know, we just, we send a load to the state and he starts with all the emails.
Any questions for Jeff or for Chief on this topic?
Well, we, well, we haven't, obviously. I know Chief had contact with me. I didn't think I did do anything. I did see a few of the people ask questions.
It's a checklist that we got the number for the board agent and the health officer and all that stuff. So that was a.
Definitely happened.
You're getting another one, not an email.
There's something other than you can do, I assume, now. And then there's the public. I, I just know what I'm asking because Exeter had posted something on one of their social medias and somebody here posted that. I think people started getting like nervous and I wanted to be able to say, I think this is all for the state.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll probably put something on Facebook. Yeah, we'll, we'll put something out.
Didn't activate a sirens in town?
That was a long one.
Seabrook does do that occasionally, but usually it's through a public service announcement through Channel Nine.
Yeah.
And Seabrook's people were, hey, at twelve o'clock, it's going to be sirens throughout the seven some communities. That was a part of this.
Yeah, but you all did something.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we did some mock, you know, some mock announcements.
But the, one of the biggest things that I remember coming out of those drills was a list of everybody who would need assistance, um, in an emergency, which, uh, is, is very relevant when you think of COVID and getting in touch with people in need who are stuck, elderly, sick. So it is.
I mean, do you need more people to, something to figure out?
Well, I mean, you know, ideally, we'd like more people on the fire department. Yeah, if we're just managing, you know, it's, it's well-staffed, you know, uh, because we, we bring in a lot of volunteers today. Even some like retired, you know, people that don't aren't on the fire department anymore, that just have experience, we can bring them in for the day and live in town. Uh, and it's, it's nice, you know, they have some experience. Like I think Tom's wife, I think she's great. She's, she works a lot of the web E O C and she helps well. Uh, it's, you know, Lisa's actually, Lisa's, Lisa's even a shared assistant. She's helping out. Uh, so we've got some, we've got some nice help.
That's good. All right. Well, I will, uh, move to approve, uh, Wayne Young as a deputy emergency management director for the town.
Second.
Second by Betsy. All in favor, say aye.
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 So this. Where are the copies?
That's the copy.
Copy.
Great. That's a copy for your records. All right. Um, we have before us, uh, meeting minutes for Tuesday, February eighth, and as well as the deliberative session on February eighth. Um, do you guys want to hold off on approving these until we can take them home, redo them? I mean, the deliberative one is obviously very long.
It's not too bad. I've, I've read most of it.
Oh, if you're quite off, that's great. Jackie?
I haven't had a chance to read it.
You want, you want to put them off?
I think we can do just the.
Yeah, the board minutes, I think, would be simple to do. So why don't we hold off on the deliberative until next meeting?
Yeah, well, that's, I'm not even a speed reader.
Boy, that was a big meal.
Yeah.
You all said unlike. Uh, I'll move the minutes for the, uh, select board meeting for Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That one. Uh, all right, March meeting dates. The only other thing on the formal agenda. Thank you very much. Uh, all right. So, um, elections are on the eighth, so don't want to do anything on that. Um, do you guys want to do the first two weeks from today? And, uh, we can look at either the fifteenth or the twenty-second for, for second half of March?
I don't know about you, but I think it's great. So the first and the twenty-second sounds kind of.
Sounds, sounds by me, is that what we're doing? So, uh, it'll be the first and twenty-second we'll put on the schedule for March meetings at this. Okay. With elections on the eighth. Great. Uh, anything else anybody has before the board? Use us to discuss, bring us, no? No? All right. With that, I will move to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Keith. Really appreciate it.
Someone write down an email for you or?
No, we got, I got your email. Um, we got the correct email. I'll reach out to Paul and I'll follow up with the director. And then, as I said, you know, there may be a couple opportunities that, you know, were the happy either from pushing your way or helping you out.
Uh, would you consider sending an email to someone?
What's that?
Would you consider sending an email to someone?
Oh, yeah. Contact you with it? Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Michael? Nice to meet you.
That's it.
That's it.
Nice to meet you.
So do you, do you keep the kids outside like all day?
No, no. I mean, they, so when it's beautiful, I'm just making very little of it. I'm thinking somewhere they're outside. It's obviously, it's all sort of weather dependent. But, you know, it's two.